Welcome to the Select Board's meeting Tuesday, January 28, 2025. Mr. Canty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the Board are joining us here in person. Members of the Board, the other committees that are joining us tonight may be joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. Members of the public may observe this meeting or attend it by joining us here at Town Hall, the Great Hall at 26 Court Street, or may do so by joining the Zoom webinar platform that is included on the agenda that is posted on the Town website. Members of the public may also observe the meeting by watching Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. Members of the public are also reminded pursuant to Massachusetts General Law that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. We are presently aware of a recording being made by the local scene formerly known as PAC TV. We are not aware of any other recordings at this time. Mr. Chairman, if there are no other matters of substance, I would read the executive session language at this time.
Please.
The Select Board will hold an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. This would be in relation to the Symes House property. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we enter into executive session at this time.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer, discussion. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the Board will be returning at approximately 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Just to make sure that it didn't conflict with the election that's going to take place, the local election is going to take place on 5/17. We speculated that it was likely that it wouldn't, but that given the time that we had, we wanted to have some answers as to, just to make sure that it wouldn't. So do we have any additional clarity as to whether or not the National MS Society's permit takes into account, or will it all interfere with the local election?
Mr. Blitzer?
I think the information we got, it starts at 6:00 in the morning, they're going to be done by 1:00 in the afternoon, and it's on Sunday. There's no setup on Saturday, so it should not interfere with their election on Saturday.
Okay. So that was the only question that I saw that stood out to me from last meeting. So if there's no other questions or concerns from any other members of the Board, I would move the two licenses and four administrative notes as a group.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer, discussion. Seeing none. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes, unanimous on the two licenses and the four admin notes. Now we're going to move on to the first agenda item, and it's the FY25 Town Budget Presentation. Mr. Brindisi.
Good evening, everybody. Derek Monizzi, Town Manager. So I'm going to jump right into the budget presentation. I know many of you have heard of this already. Finance Committee is already well into their budget review with their various subcommittees. But as you all know, the charter requires for the Finance Committee, Select Board, and the School Committee to meet at least twice a year. And so this is one of our annual tri-Board meetings in which we go over the budget. So again, so I'll go to talk about the overall budget, but in particular, I want folks to be aware that when we build our budget on the Town side, it's, what we use as some of our left and right limits are the goals and priorities that the Select Board ratify usually every August time period. And so we've been doing this for the past few summers. And so I have listed on the, on two slides, a number of the priorities, not all of them. You can find all the priorities, they're listed on the Town website, but a number of the priorities I have on these two slides. And so what you realize is that there's a lot of work that our various town departments are advancing, and the budget will reflect that work. One thing you will also note is that we have a lot of master planning processes that are currently taking place, from the Planning Board's overall master plan to the master planning process at Hedges Pond, to Forges Field. We have a master planning process for Holtek, as you know. We have a planning process for Memorial Hall. So we're really spending this fiscal year really focused on planning so that we can really have, you know, five to 10-year plans to move this community forward. So as we enter the budget discussion, I want to recognize the ongoing conversations that have taken place throughout the summer. Dr. Campbell, myself, Michelle Badger at the time, Christina Jackson, Selectman Canty, and Selectman Quinto had been meeting on a regular basis, at least once a month, to talk about this year's budget. We, that helped decide on, you know, the split, and I'll talk about the split in a little bit, but really, I think, set the stage on the reality of what the revenues are, and those, and that reality will shape what we're able to accomplish in FY26. So the, so the column I like, I always like to focus on, as you know, over the last three years, is really, you have the new revenues, because the new revenues are going to determine, you know, what we're able to accomplish for that year. And so you can see here on the top line, when we look at new, 2.5% in new growth, you know, that represents almost $8.5 million. We were able to budget almost $2.3 million in local receipts, indirect costs, reimbursements is $90,000. So this year, when we, when we looked at our split, you know, we said we have approximately, you know, $10.8 million in new revenues, and that we would, we would split those funds, 39% to the Town and 61% on the school side. You know, we, and then by doing so, we then, you know, have to recognize that we have to learn to live within our means, you know, and, you know, if the Town can't learn to live within those means of 39% split, then we would have to make some very difficult decisions. And I'm sure the School had those very similar conversations when they built their budget this year as well. So when we look at the split, you know, it was a $4.2 million to the Town, $6.6 million on the school side, you know, but then after you have to deduct fixed costs and some of the cherry sheet offsets, what you have available on the Town side is $2.8 million for the Town to balance its budget and approximately $5.8 million for the school side to balance its budget. I'm happy to answer questions, but I'll defer to the Chair.
Excuse me?
Would you prefer we save questions until the end, or should we ask?
Yeah, we're hoping to let both sides do the presentation and open it up for our groups' questions, and then if anybody in the audience are online, is that okay?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah.
So again, those are the new revenues for FY26. I can't see this. Give me a second here. So again, what does this mean for the dollar change from the previous year? You know, in 2025, we had a general operating budget of $281 million. So this is an increase of 10, a little north of $10 million, which is almost 3.6% from the prior year. And then looking at some of the offsets, the budget increases to $303 million or thereabouts, which is an increase of about $3.7 million. And then when we include our enterprise account, that's an additional for the overall budget of $21 million, which is an increase from the previous year of $420,000, or 1.2% or thereabouts. Sorry, 1.9%. So the total budget for this year, which includes schools and which includes enterprise account, and then any cherry sheet offsets, is $325 million, or an increase of $11.3 million, for a total increase from the prior year of 3.59%. So you've all seen this slide in the past. This is the breakdown. And again, this, this is, this has been the split over the last few years. This is the split this year, and this certainly makes sense to continue the split when we look at our revenues. 61%, the School owns, and 39% the Town owns. The, the graph to the right, to the left, sorry, is the breakdown by expenses, salaries, and fringe. I can send this out. I know it's difficult to read, but I'm happy to send this out to all the Board and Committee members so you can see this in greater detail. And so how, you know, the revenues, as you know, 73% of our revenues come from property taxes. 11% comes from state aid. 7% comes from local receipts. Enterprise fund revenues represent approximately 7%, and then another 2% for other revenue sources. So this is a big one, you know, especially when we talk about these areas in which some would suggest that maybe we're overspending, or, you know, we're not being as lean as we should be with the budget. But when you look at this slide here, 48% of the budget is salaries, and 22% of the budget is fringe. Debt service represents 7% of the budget. So almost 75% of the budget is our personnel. And so in large part, when we think about making cuts, we're talking about cutting services, and cutting services means laying off personnel. So the expense side of the house, you know, what does that really entail? You know, that's our training line item, that's our utility cost, things of that nature. And so we've got to keep the lights on. We have to pay our fuel costs and our utility costs. You know, we have to pay for training for our staff. So, you know, I always say that it's, when you really break down our expenses, it's very difficult to balance the budget on pens and paper, you know, because that's really what you boil down to is what you're going to cut. So there's not a lot of fat on the budget. Some of the areas where you may look back historically on trends, where maybe there's some, some remaining dollars left over. Some of those line items, for example, overtime, I'll give that an example. You know, we may see some departments have significant amounts of overtime that's remaining. And oftentimes, overtime is unpredictable, you know, so overtime is driven on, say, for the police department when they have vacancies, right? So if they have a lot of vacancies, they're going to drive up their overtime line item versus if they have a low vacancy rate for their police officers, they'll have, they'll use very little of overtime. So overtime and other costs like that are sometimes a moving target, and that's something that we have to be mindful of. And I'd also say that in some of these areas, when you look at and you see, you know, significant balances remaining, one thing that we try to impress upon our department heads is that we don't have this use-it-or-lose-it mentality. And what I mean by that is, we want our department heads to be good stewards of these dollars. And so municipalities, government agencies, especially the federal government, I'll speak to the federal government because being in the Air Force, the International Guard, I see how they spend dollars, and they have a use-it-or-lose-it mentality where they have a spending frenzy at the end of the fiscal year because they have been trained that if you don't spend the money, that those, the folks that are making those appropriations are going to cut that, your budget by that amount that you haven't spent. We don't do that. That's not our philosophy in this Town. Our philosophy is, you only use what you have to use, and then we'll continue to fund at that level because we know you're being good stewards of those dollars. And any dollars that are remaining at the end of the year, as you all know, that falls back to free cash. Having a healthy free cash certification allows us to fund our capital improvements. And, you know, I know next week you'll, sorry, Finance Committee will be hearing, I think tomorrow, on the capital budget. So again, a healthy free cash reserve helps us fund our capital. Free cash comes in large part by the dollars that are gone unspent by the department heads that are being good fiscal stewards. So moving on to some of the new, not new, but the other accounts that you'll see in this year's budget, there's been a commitment, you know, by the Board over the last couple of years to continue to appropriate funds in the nuclear stabilization account. Half a million dollars went in last year, proposing a half a million dollars this year. The same goes for the facility maintenance stabilization account, half a million dollars last year, half a million dollars this year. And the capital road improvement plan, last year we were able to increase that by $1.5 million. As you all know, we regularly hear from our residents that we have to do more with our streets and sidewalks. So we had the ability to increase that line item to $2.65 million this year. Last year, with last year's appropriation, we were able to pave approximately 30 miles worth of roads. It's the highest number of road miles paved in our previous construction season was about 15 road miles. So we were able to double the output last year with that appropriation. And so we continue to want to invest in our streets and sidewalks. We continue to want to see our road rating increase. So as I near the end of my presentation, we still have a commitment. The budget, the Governor's budget came out last week. I haven't seen the final net state aid as of yet, but I do think it's better than what the Governor appropriated last year. So any additional dollars that we finally would receive by the Legislature this summer, we would have the same 61/39 split, and so we would apportion it accordingly. So again, we'll keep you posted on, on the state budget process as it moves through the Legislature. But right now, the Governor's budget just came out as of last week. So just some budget highlights. As I mentioned, you know, this budget really focuses on the Select Board's goals and priorities. It invests in infrastructure, as I just pointed out, invests in our stabilization accounts. We have some succession planning that we need to invest in, although I continue to try to encourage Ms. Barrett not to retire. She has said she will retire someday, and so we do need to have a succession plan in place and ensure that her historical knowledge doesn't leave when she does decide to retire. So we have a set aside funds for an Assistant Finance Director this year. Something that's unique and interesting this year, the Rec Director did not recommend lifeguards at White Horse Beach. Does not believe it's an appropriate use of resources. Instead, has recommended to eliminate lifeguards at White Horse Beach and replace the lifeguards with beach supervisor, with a beach supervisor possession. So that's been a change in this year's budget. We will fund, as you all know, the second year of collective bargaining agreements. We have all agreements in place but one union. We continue to work with that union on coming to an agreement. And then this will implement the year three, the PEC Agreement, which brings in net savings of $1.5 million. Remember, year one of the PEC Agreement brought savings of around $3 million. So we continue to see the fruit of that PEC Agreement, which is a six-year agreement. And because of that, that PEC Agreement, we've been able to mitigate the OPEB liability, which in 2022 was $941 million. That liability has decreased to $567 million. Although that is a success and an accomplishment, we still, last check, we're still number four in the state as far as OPEB liability, behind Boston, Western Springfield. So we have significant work to do around OPEB. And then last, I would say that this budget, it continues to invest in our general stabilization account. Division of Local Services recommends that stabilization, this stabilization account should, should match 5% of our operating budget. Ms. Barrett has a program in place that if we continue to invest on this trajectory, we'll meet that 5% goal within the next, I think, four or five years. As you all know, the general stabilization account is our rainy day fund, and we will use it if, if necessary during an economic downturn. So we need to continue to strengthen that account. That account, like our other stabilization accounts, will also affect our bond rating. So I will close here. I think the Chairman said he wants to wait till after Dr. Campbell's presentation is over for questions. So thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Chris Campbell, Superintendent of Schools. Great to be with you this evening. Try not to be redundant for what Mr. Brindisi said. I have a couple slides that reiterate that, and we'll be sure to skip over some of that. The budget that were proposed really not only reflects our financial priorities, but also takes into careful consideration the balance of the needs, long-term goals, and challenges. A very collaborative process, as Mr. Brindisi pointed out. I want to point out for the general public that these slides, as well as other information, all our budget detail is in electronic school board. Also, on Dr. Blaisdell's website, you can find this information as well as great detail videos regarding anything that we're talking about this evening in greater detail as well. So our objective is to really go through the information regarding, a little information on the Plymouth Schools, our current trends, budget development process, and the TAO guidelines, our proposed FY26 budget, sort of general overview by category, some of the budget drivers that we have seen, our efforts to control and reduce those expenses, and then, of course, answer any questions. The following slide is a simple demographic snapshot of our school district. We continue to operate 13 schools and an alternative high school, which supports students from North and South High Schools. Our demographic continues to change, becoming slightly more diverse than even last school year. Additionally, our high needs population, which includes students that are multilingual, learners, economically disadvantaged students, and students with special education needs continues to increase. Our October 1 enrollment for this year was 7,038. We currently have 7,116 students, however, but for budget purposes, we always pull our October 1 data. That's, that's what we send to the state, and we use that. So even though we're up in comparison to that number at 7116, as I said, our October 1 was 7,038. So when we do per pupil expenditures in terms of supplies and materials, it's all based on that October 1 number. Last October, we were 7,055. So we have a slight increase in comparison to like last year, but nothing substantial. This slide, I talk a lot about enrollment. So this shows a percentage change between FY19 and FY24 by grade. This is all on State website. I have the link there on the bottom. It could take you for more information. I've also included Massachusetts data for comparison purposes. So as you can see, you know, we've seen a decline across the Commonwealth. Our greatest enrollment decline was noted in grades 6, 7, and 8 in FY24. Again, this is FY24 last year. Plymouth's preschool enrollment, however, continues to grow exponentially. You look at that little orange line at the top there. So this has been seen across the state. So while the state has seen a 6% increase, in the past five years, Plymouth has experienced a 41% increase in preschool. Our preschool enrollment continues to grow, again, exponentially larger, with students with significant medical, neurological, and other developmental challenges. This is something that we're paying close attention to as we consider both our budget, our service delivery, and our infrastructure needs. These are students that are receiving many times early intervention services before they even come to the Plymouth Schools. Continuing with sort of enrollment, this shows our current average class size by school. So this gives you an overview of the average class size by grade level across all of our eight elementary schools, as well as district-wide averages. It also shows our districts, what we call our soft cap. We try to keep at 22 students for grades kindergarten through grade 2, really, or up to grade 3, and then 25 for grades 4 and 5. So you can see those soft caps. Our smaller schools, Cold Spring and Hedge, where they only have 12 classrooms, it becomes very difficult to consolidate any further, or you'd have classes in the, in the mid 30s. Ultimately, our district is striving to balance class size in line with that soft cap in order to maintain quality and consistent learning environment across all of our eight schools. As I said before, while our enrollment has declined in recent years, the percentage of high need students has grown exponentially. So this chart is really showing just that. Our students that are receiving special education services, our multilingual learners, and our economically disadvantaged students, and you can see that rate over time. With that, again, we have to provide more specialized services many times, you know, language support, individual education plans, social and mental health programs, all which require specialized staff in many cases, sometimes smaller class sizes depending on the unique needs of the students, and tailored curricula. I'm going to skip over the budget development process, as Mr. Brindisi already pointed that out. Again, it was a very collaborative, that 39/61 split. I'm going to ask Dr. Blaisdell to speak to this part right now.
So as we, as we developed the FY26 budget and working with the Town in regards to the monies available, there was still a shortfall. There was a shortfall originally from our original intent budget that we presented of about $820,000. When, what we did with that number is then we kind of, we talked to the Town, we talked to the State, and looked at our custodians to try and get a little creative in regards to how do we see if we could get additional funding. As you know, lunch has been free for the, for students for the past couple of years. So our cafeteria revolving fund is, is much higher than it ever was in the, in the past. And this money that's in the cafeteria revolving fund really has to be used for very, very specific purposes. If you're going to use this money, you really need state, state permission to really use that money for other things. So what we did is we worked with our school committee and with the State and got a little creative in, because we have custodians that work in our cafeteria every day, taking care of the cafeteria, making sure things are cleaned up. And when we asked the State if there was any way we could split fund those positions that work in the cafeteria, we got permission, but there had to be very, very specific parameters around that. The number of hours that they work, it had to be specific to that. It couldn't be the entire school, the entire year, they work full year. It had to be for school days. So we had to look at a proportion of, can we use cafeteria funds? So we figured out what that, that amount of money is, and it works out that we're using about $300,000 by split funding, the custodians that work in the cafeteria during lunches, and then the rest of the funding is coming from the budget. So we reduced that 800 to about $520,000 next year. So we're looking at a reduction, even though things are looking good and positive overall, there's still a reduction in this budget of about $520,000 by just using that, that function through the State. So when you look at these different overall promising outlooks, one is really looking at the deficit, really kind of getting creative in regards to how do we, how do we look at strategic and thoughtful reductions. Another piece is, when we look at some of those reductions, is really looking at prioritizing student needs. The budget that we present tonight, like I said, was, came in much higher, but we really tried to look at all of our contracts. We looked at supplies, and we really tried to, to dwindle that down as, as much as we could, but we didn't want to affect student programming. Everything is, is focused on students, and how do we keep student programming? Like I said, we're looking at strategic reductions. We're not necessarily making an answer in regards to what those reductions are at this point in time. We're really trying to see this through and see in regards to, are there retirees? Are there people that are going to leave? Or, so kind of look at really being strategic. We, we're looking again at being transparent. We're looking at, obviously, we're confident that we can manage this definite deficit, and we're going to continue to have that as well. When you look at the FY26 budget, it comes in at $127,229,274. It's split between salaries and non-salaries. Our salaries are coming in about 77%, and our non-salary numbers are coming in about 23% of our proposed budget. This next slide just breaks it down by object code. When you look at the blue, the orange, and the gray, that's the portion of our budget that is salaries. And the other pieces, the, the orange, the yellow, the blue, and the green, that is our non-salary dollars, which is about, again, 23% of our budget. And again, those are the areas where we really looked at when we walked into this budget. We really, really examined. We looked at software. Are we, are we getting the Are we, are we getting the life out of our software, are students using the software, are teachers using the software? If we weren't getting a lot of usage, that was something that was possibly reduced. We really looked at our supplies, and where could we reduce that number as well? And then when you look at the actual numbers, and when you look at our salaries versus our non-salary numbers, you'll see that our salaries, it was an increase of about 6.3%. And when you look at our non-salary dollars, they're less than a percent. So that shows you, we really tried to look at those numbers, and they're really pretty lean. When you look at, one of the things that we'll bring up in a little bit is our electricity costs for next year. We're estimating about a $400,000 increase for our electricity. We have a 2.75% increase for our bus contract. We have about a 5, about an 8% increase for our special education transportation, and we're bringing those non-salary dollars under, under a percent. So really, most of our budget is, the increases is really focused on salaries. And then, when you break down, as you know, we have different cost centers. Each cost center number represents a school or a department. There's a couple anomalies when you look at our budget, and I just want to kind of highlight a few of them, so when you're looking at that. When you look at our district-wide elementary schools, there's a, most, it's about a 14%, 15% increase here. Through contract negotiations, we added an elementary health teacher. There were, there were standards that weren't necessarily being taught. We were trying to offer more health to our elementary students. So you're going to see a larger increase here. Most of the other percentages you're going to see are somewhere between 5 and 7%, and really, again, most of that is salaries. When you look at our secondary level, the major decrease you're going to see is looking at our Vo-Tec school. It's based upon this year's tuition, the number of students attending. There's a decrease, so there's going to be a huge decrease in regards to tuition. Also, when you look at our district-wide, the ones that are highlighted in yellow, you're going to see a huge decrease, but there really isn't a decrease. Transportation was housed in these items, in 348, which is Student Support Services, Special Education, and Business Services. This is our, all of our buses. What we were realizing is, is transportation was scattered throughout our entire budget, so sometimes it was hard to pinpoint where it was. So what we've done is we've pulled those numbers out and put it into a separate cost center. So you can actually now look and see district-wide transportation, and so it's all-in-one cost center now. So even though you'll see major decreases in these, it's, it's actually an increase when you put them all together. So we were, again, just trying to make transportation itself, and it makes it much easier to manage as well. This, one of the things that's come up, and one of the questions that has come up over time is, what do you pay per pupil? This number is actually developed by the state, and the state, right now, at this point in time, has only released through FY23. So we can't necessarily give you an accurate number for FY24, or 25, or 26 at this point in time. This was a slide that we showed last year in comparison to other school districts, and really what we were highlighting here is that Plymouth spends more percentages, a higher percentage when you're looking at the two areas that are highlighted, special education, mental health, and transportation. We've talked about transportation over and over and over again. And the other place where we're significantly above, and you kind of look down that last column on the right, is employee benefits. We spend about 23% of our per pupil spending for employee benefits. When you look at FY23, the state changed the way they put these graphs out, so we don't have as nice a graph as we used to before. Again, it just highlights when you look at FY23, our total in-district per pupil was $21,495 per student, and when you look at incorporating special education and transportation in, it now, it raises it to $22,105. And that's the way the state looks at it. The total in-district expenditure, when you look at per pupil, doesn't include transportation. It doesn't include special education. So that's when you have to look at the total expenditure, and that total expenditure includes those items. And again, when you look at those two areas I highlighted in '22, special education, mental health, transportation, and when you look at insurance, retirement, and programs, when you look at what we pay per pupil, it's quite high. And again, this just really looks at, over time, where we are in comparison to the state. We're above, we're above in, when you look at FY21 through FY23, back in FY19 and '20, I'm sorry, we were above the whole entire time, I should say, sorry. And then as we go, we're going to explain these just a little bit more. These are really our significant budget drivers this year. We had contract negotiations this past year, and we're going to get into what the increases are. But really, for FY26, FY26 is the largest increase of the three-year contract that we're expecting, and we estimated it to be about $6.2 million of an increase as we were going through negotiations. Special education services, transportation, tuitions. OSD, as we've talked about before, sets tuitions for our special education. We don't have any control over that. It's a little below 4% for next year, but some of the, the schools have reached out to OSD and have gotten permission to increase their tuitions to a higher number over that. So we, again, we have to, if we have students in out-of-district transport, tuitions placements, we have to pay whatever OSD sets. Transportation rates, like I said, our, our bus contract is about 2.75% increase for next year. Our special ed transportation is about 8% increase for next year. Declining state and federal grants, tuition, salaries are going up and not keeping up with the increase in, in grants that we're getting from, from the federal government. Utilities, I mentioned it briefly, but we've, we're looking at utilities. I'll talk a little bit about this in a minute, but one of, utilities are up in this district. There's about, we used about a million kilowatt-hours more last, last year than the prior year. So that's something that we're addressing, and I'll bring that up in just a few minutes in regards to talking a little bit more how we're addressing that. And like I said, transportation and crossing guards, those contracts have gone up over the past years as well. Chris, get into this, right?
So, you know, as Dr. Blaisdell said, contracts and our salary dollars is really something that is driving a significant part of our budget. Our budget is overwhelmingly personnel, so I just want to kind of walk through that. So I, a version of this slide was originally showed at our January 8 meeting last year, where we had the joint meeting, and, you know, really for the last few years, it raised concerns about the competitive nature of hiring and retaining staff. It's been very difficult to, to hire staff and to compete in the local region. You may recall me sort of showing those comparison communities, and that was something that we were really concerned about, and we know that fiscal times are challenging, we're going into negotiations, and we're trying to do right by our employees and to be more competitive. 51% of our licensed educators live in Plymouth, and we're well over 60, we're over 64% of all our employees. So really trying to look after our, our community, the people that actually live in this community as well. So many of you know that, you know, last year was a very challenging time. We had a billion-dollar projected shortfall in terms of state revenue. So we had a lot of conditions that we were concerned about, and we knew we needed more money to, to settle our contracts, but also were concerned about supplemental appropriation in the fall. This is just something to kind of give a historical of why we were concerned, sort of sticking with the challenges. This table highlights a sort of a representational sample of applicants across three time periods, 2008, 2018, and 2024. So an elementary teacher position in 2008, we would receive 347, almost 350 applicants. Go, fast forward to 2018, it drops down to 212. Last year, 35. That's the largest number that we would get in any given position that was posted. As you can see, for the specialist, the secondary, they really dropped down to the single digits, and many times, those individuals didn't have the proper licensure that they were applying for. So it's a challenge. We're competing, we're competing for, for people that are hard to come by, and we're also competing financially, and we knew we didn't have the money. So while there were other districts that were really, you know, it was all over the news, facing turmoil, all the cutting contracts, increased tensions with strikes within their communities, we opted for a strategic approach after our budget was developed. So last spring, we made a difficult decision after a lot of internal meetings with administration, with school committee, lots of decisions, and we reduced 29 positions last spring. So that they would not, these positions would not exist this year. So those positions no longer exist this year. So we have other people supplementing that work that was being done by other people. By eliminating those 29 positions, and keep in mind, we were able to find alternative employment for the majority of those staff, either here in Plymouth or someplace else. So we feel really good about that. And that's why we wanted to do it in the spring. If we waited till the fall, you know, it's different circumstances, and we're talking about people's livelihoods. So by freeing up that, the funding for those 29 positions, we were able to put that into our negotiations and settle our contracts. So we feel really good about that, and now we feel that we have a more competitive contract, and we were able to do that without going to the town, looking for a fall supplemental appropriation, because we, we realize how difficult circumstances are and want to be mindful of how much money we're asking for as well. So, you know, again, our district is an, is made up of an experienced workforce. A higher percentage of our teachers hold advanced degrees, extensive experience, educators with, you know, advanced qualifications, bring a depth of knowledge, which enhances our student learning. And of course, having an experienced and highly educated workforce comes with financial implications. So higher salaries, which is, again, reflected in, what Dr. Blaisdell said, our personnel budget. So with 88% of our teachers having at least a master's degree, multiple master's degrees in many cases, and over 57% of our teachers on the top step, we're going to find that our personnel lines are going to be high because of the, the nature of the school system. We're, we're working with a lot of licensed, experienced teachers. I'm going to have Dr. Blaisdell talk about the contracts.
So when we were going through negotiations, these were our estimates for what the contracts would cost year after year for each one of the groups. When you look at the numbers on the left-hand side, that represents the code that goes along with the, the different categories of, of employees. The first one is, is your teaching, your certificated staff, so it's anyone that holds a license through the state of Massachusetts, teachers, administrators, OTs, PTs, speech, and so forth. But those were the estimated costs for the contracts over the year after year. And again, that was based upon the staff that we had at that point in time. 50002, those are our clerical staff, all our admin assistants. That was what was expected to cost in addition to what they were currently making through these contract negotiations. And the last one is 5003s, that represents our custodians. It represents our bus drivers. It does not represent our cafeteria staff. Our cafeteria staff is not in our budget. It's a separate budget altogether through their revolving. So when you look at the three years of the contracts that we just settled, those are the anticipated increases to salaries for each one of the particular years. And like I said, FY26 is the most expensive year of all of them.
Just want to talk about special education a little bit, as Dr. Blaisdell mentioned. So this chart, it's hard to see, I understand that, and should be, and again, we have copies, electronic copies, but this chart illustrates special ed costs over time, FY10 to FY23. So in that period, we were seeing an increase to special ed costs of about 4.3% a year. Teacher-related expenses have been the largest contributor to that. Transportation costs have also consistently increased, particularly in 2019, 2020. The cost for public schools, collaborative placements, and private out-of-school placements have also increased extensively. Dr. Blaisdell mentioned the OSD, the Operational Service Division, that, that provides those recommendations to the governor's office for those appropriations. Those numbers have been in the fours the last couple of years. You may recall, a couple of years ago, I came with a double-digit number, which was a $1 million increase alone with the existing positions. So those are the things that, that affect our budget over time. And transportation is a, is a significant part of that, significant part. So it, all the more reason, and I've shared this before, investing in our in-district special education programs is critical. So while our enrollment has gone down, I've been here 17 years, our enrollment's gone down, but if you were going to our schools, you're not going to see empty classrooms. And that's because we've invested in our special education programs from preschool through high school, and we even have a post, a post-18 program for students to stay with us until they're 22. So with having that continuum of service in the district, we're doing right by our residents, their kids, and we're also bringing the costs down ultimately, because those programs for students with complex special needs, such as the programs we have in district, would cost you at minimum $65,000 a year for tuitions, plus tens of thousands of dollars to transport students. So not only are we doing right by the students, which is our, our ultimate goal and objective, and their families, but we're also doing right by the taxpayers by, by reducing that projected expense if we weren't having those programs. Keep in mind, we wouldn't be able to do this unless we had the space that we have. But again, if you were to go into our schools, you're not going to see empty classrooms, because we've, we've really tried to maximize that. Again, you can't, this is a hard slide to see, but it, just for illustration purposes, we're talking about our grants over time. Our entitlement grants, primarily the federal grants that we've received in the last five years, the important thing to note, if you look at that blue bar graph at the very end, is it's gone down. So in the last few years, we've seen an overall reduction to our allocation grants. So these grants can significantly impact our operations, especially in supporting our high-needs communities. So this is students with special education, our preschool programs, students who are English learners. So when these funds go down, we have to find a way to make this, these services, because these are services for kids. So what ends up happening is when these grants go down, and we don't find out until July in many cases, and our budgets are already passed, and we're already trying to move forward with positions and whatnot, we have to make decisions with, within our budget. And this is what we've been doing since, since I've been in schools. You know, this is the way it works. But it's become challenging, because those federal funds not only have plateaued, but they've declined. You're probably aware of a memo that came out from the White House Budget Office yesterday that paused grants and loans. I've received an update this evening that there's a federal judge that has blocked that, but keep in mind, we weren't concerned from what I was receiving from the Superintendent's Association for our entitlement grants this year, but what I, what is sort of unknown, the unknown for us, is what federal grants will be available to us next year. And we always build a budget with that as an unknown, as, as the town does with the state. We're also looking, and we realize that you have federal grants here at the town side, too. So it's that unknown that is really challenging when we're trying to build a budget, and when these grants are tied to students and student services. Just to kind of, I'm not going to go through this, I talk about this every year. This is Chapter 70, our state aid to education. We've seen it's been kind of flat, but it went up by 4.4% last year. The governor, back in July, I believe it was, had a supplemental appropriation of $104 per student, so that was a, an increase which we split with the town, and that was voted on the follow-up town meeting. It was very helpful for us not to have to reduce our budget any further. The preliminary forecast for Chapter 70, based on the governor's proposed budget, represents a 550,000, roughly a $550,000 increase for next year. We'll see. I'm not going to belabor this. We've talked about the unfunded and underfunded mandates, but there's a lot of them, and again, I'll refer you to former state auditor Suzanne Bump's report where she examined this, and this is something that I think all communities, both municipal and schools, deal with. A lot of mandates that don't have the funding tied to them, and at that point, there were over $700 million in unfunded or underfunded mandates. And this is just a list of some of the examples of things that are thrown on us at the school side regarding that. I'm going to have Dr. Blaisdell come up and talk about utilities a little bit.
One of the issues that we did find in this year's budget, and when we were budgeting, is that the usage in the schools for electricity, we've done a lot of work with electricity in trying to save money in regards to electricity with the solar work that we've done, but the usage has actually increased about a million kilowatt-hours this past year. So that's actually translating to about $400,000 increase to our budget. It's primarily at one school. It's primarily at South High School. So what we are doing, a lot of times when you build new buildings, they're very complex, and they're very computer-generated. There's a lot of computers and so forth. So what we're doing is, the first thing we're doing is we're bringing in Reflex Lighting, which is one of the contractors that, that worked with us when we built that school, to really look at the relay switches, controls, programming at South High School. Everything is controlled by controls there. It's all programmed, so that's one of the pieces that we're looking at. South High School is also subject to a lot of lightning strikes as well on the grounds. So those are some things that we've actually faced over the past couple of years. So I'm going to start with the lighting, and then we're going to kind of work our way through to see where we can decrease that number. So hopefully, that $400,000 So, hopefully, that $400,000 isn't necessarily realized next year. Hopefully, that we can bring that down. But some of the things that we're working through is we're working with our energy consultant to do a walkthrough, to see if there's anything else we can identify. We're working with, just as a district, we're working with Mike Cahill to really look at some energy reduction measures. And we're also looking at some possible solar, additional solar arrays as well at some of the schools. It won't be necessarily in place next year, but we're working on that. We've worked at, looking at de-statification fans, fans at both Plymouth South High School, Plymouth South Middle School, and Nathaniel Morton. So, we're really trying to look at where else can we save? But our real focus is going to be South High School and how can we bring that electricity usage down? This is a slide that we've presented over the past couple of years. We've kind of taken out a few and tried to simplify it a little bit. But really, when you look at the top row there, is, the top row is really looking at the, the cost of electricity if, if the Plymouth Public Schools did not have solar. The second row there is what we actually paid for electricity. 2024 is an anomaly because we had our, one of our solar fields down for about, it was about seven or eight months. So, we're going to actually see a little increase this year because we didn't have it last year. So, really, that bottom row is really what we saved when you're looking at having solar. If we didn't have solar, we wouldn't have saved that money. We would have been spending that top row year after year after year. So, the solar leasing has helped us significantly. And hopefully, working with Mike Cahill and the town, we'll see even greater savings going forward. Next, we're going to talk about school transportation. I know this is kind of a hot topic, an issue really across the town. You've seen this map year after year. Really, again, just, we have a lot of roads that we travel in Plymouth. We have 104 square miles that, that our buses are trying to travel day after day after day. And a lot of times when we run into issues with traffic, we're seeing more and more traffic issues on Long Pond Road, leaving PCIS, something that should be very quick to get to the highway. Some of our buses are taking 15 minutes just to leave PCIS to then get to the highway, not even starting their route. If you're looking at some of our southern routes, when you leave South Middle School or South High School, it can take, if you or I were to drive it by car, you're talking 20, 25 minutes to get down to Budleigh Bay or down to Atlantic Country Club if you're driving the way the bus does. And then they have to stop. So, it takes quite a while to get around town. So, what we're trying to do is, just on the next slide, this really just shows you some of the number, when we talk about, when you say, okay, I see some buses that are empty. Our elementary bus runs, really, those buses are the fullest. A bus typically, on the side of the bus, it says 71 students. If you ever try and see 71 students in a bus, you can't get around and you're going to have issues. So, most of our buses, we kind of look at maxing them out around 55 students. That gives people a little bit of room, but it's still pretty full. So, when you look at a lot of our elementary school runs, they're in the 40s, they're in the high 50s. When you look at some of the runtime, the distances aren't that long, the distance aren't, aren't that long, and the duration isn't that long, but they're pretty full. But then, when you look at some of them, some of them are almost an hour long too, and they're only traveling 12 miles. So, some of our buses travel quite a bit and are full, especially at the elementary school level. The high schools, you'll see that some of our capacity, some of the number of students assigned is low, but they're going quite a distance. So, it's a balance of trying to, to make sure we're managing the routes, the length of the routes, and the number of students. And some of the students, obviously, we'd like to fill them more, but if we put more on them, it increases the, the length of the run as well. We also look at, we also do Rising Tide. Some people forget that we are responsible for providing transportation for students at Rising Tide. So, we have about seven to nine buses that, that service Rising Tide, and the average route time is about 53 minutes. And the number of students assigned varies there as well, anywhere from 10 to 39. But the length and distant, the length of that route and the time of that route is quite long. We are working to try and mitigate costs as much as we possibly can. We did increase, we, we purchased several buses, several vans. We purchased the vans mostly through ESER funds that we had through the federal government to try and take control of some of our routes. And we've saved money by taking over those routes. We were contracting out for athletics all the time. We do almost, almost all of our own athletics now, and we're not contracting out, paying the rates through first student. We're buying vans and trying, taking over more of those routes. We've talked in the past that we're sometimes spending $600 to $900 for some of these special education routes per day. And so, we're now taking them over and we're probably running about $200 to $225 a day for taking those same routes over. So, we're saving a significant amount by having our own vans. We are in the, we had first student do an efficiency study. We eliminated two buses completely. Each bus is about $84,000, $85,000 to have it on the road per year. So, we've eliminated two buses completely. Right now, we're in the process of a transportation study. Really, what these, and this is something that we've talked about, and this is something that when the results are available, we'll come forward to select board, we'll be talking more and more about these. But this is really that, that study that we're looking at, does it make sense to the town of Plymouth to take over yellow bus transportation? So, we're in the process of that right now. We're actually meeting with, with one of the groups tomorrow and having all the interviews. We're involving the bus company as well in those interviews as well. And we've had to provide them with documentation after documentation to, for them to look at, at those as well. We're looking at collaborative purchasing with other towns. And then, right now, we're also working with our legislatures to look at seeing if there's a funding bill that can go forward. And that's in the very early stage. That's actually, we, they were working on the wording the other day, and hopefully, they'll present that bill as well.
So, other ways that we're trying to reduce our expenses, so, as many of you know, we have a amazing, comprehensive program in Plymouth. So, a lot of college career technical education programs, both at Plymouth South and Plymouth North High Schools. These are all the programs that we have in Plymouth. So, that's really, you know, it's, I think it's a testament to this community to support this. We have a lot of students that go into the trades, but also a lot of students that go off to college. But it's really providing a wonderful program, also expanding the workforce for the local economy. But from a fiscal perspective, what a lot of people don't understand in the community is offering, you know, a robust CCTE program, which we're very fortunate to do, is also a win for the taxpayers, especially due to what's called the Chapter 74 Non-Resident Student Tuition Program. So, under that program, students can attend a CCTE program, I'll call them, offered outside of Plymouth if they apply and are accepted to the program. So, we see this with agricultural school students. Dr. Blaisdell mentioned that we're seeing a decline in that number for next fiscal year. Those are students that are, have gone to agricultural schools, $22,000, $27,000, $28,000 of tuition a year, plus the transportation. We see that from Bristol Aggie primarily. So, since Plymouth doesn't have a program, students can apply, they get accepted at tuition. So hypothetically, if we didn't have these programs, you know, we'd be looking at millions of dollars that we would be investing, the town would be investing into those programs rather than investing in the program we have internally, which we can do at a, at a better rate too, honestly. We've also done everything we can in recent years to utilize ESER funds. When capital funding was unavailable, we've talked about facility issues in the past, really trying to preserve the integrity of our buildings, or the envelope, as we say, using over $640,000 in each of our parts to repair our heating and ventilation, as well as over almost $50,000 in roof repairs in the past. Seeking competitive grants is something that we do all the time. We have some people in the room that are experts at this. They do it quite a bit with a lot of help from internal people. It's crucial for us because it really, we rely on these grants, not only the entitlement grants, but the competitive grants. So, really, to help us to target specific needs. So, we're very happy that this year that we've received nearly $1.6 million so far. We have other grants out there that we've applied for, and hopefully, we are awarded those. But just to give you a sense of some of the things that we're doing, we have a clean energy workforce grant that is supporting our vocational program. We have a program that supports our mental health for teens as well as EL students. We have another capital skills grant, which has allowed us to completely renovate the technology in self-high schools, design and visual communication, so the TV production program that they do there. A lot of people don't know that we took that, all the technology in that school for that program came from the old self-high school. So, it was already five-plus years old when we brought it in there. So, it was over 12 years old and, again, a nationally recognized program. It certainly served its life, but having that grant allowed us to upgrade that. A rethinking discipline grant, and then a Commonwealth preschool partnership grant. This one has been critical to us. This allows us, we have a half-million-dollar, second year in a row that we receive this grant. It allows us to provide through itinerant staff, specialists, we have, you know, speech pathologists, behavior therapists, special education teachers, really, you know, very credentialed folks that are going into our public preschools, excuse me, our private preschools for students that require special education support and supporting them in their programs. This allows families to keep their kids in programs full-time. And also, because we're at capacity, we have, one of our preschool programs is actually, we have a satellite program at Manomet now because we've outgrown the space that we have. Again, that rise that I referred to in that chart, but that grant has been instrumental. We've applied for it again, and we hope that we receive that in the future. So, you know, as we look ahead in the coming year, we're mindful of, you know, a lot of priorities and future concerns, but I think we feel confident, as Dr. Blaisdell said, we've, you know, we've looked at this very strategically, very collaboratively with the town. We feel that we can work within this. Hopefully, there aren't any surprises in terms of allocation grants or anything in the future, but we feel very confident that this budget will, if funded the way we feel it is budgeted, will support us for FY '26, almost the '25, but FY '26 already. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I do have a series of questions for at least Mr. Brandisi and Dr. Campbell, possibly Ms. Barrett, but we're all here, so we'll all go through it. Mr. Brandisi, if you'd like to come to the podium. So, first, you know, I've been looking at these budgets in Plymouth for 11 years now. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but every, every budget cycle is somebody's first budget cycle. So, I think it's important to emphasize some sort of, some of the basic tenants as to what goes into these discussions and this planning. So, one of the, one of the more basic things that comes to my mind would be the difference between a level service budget and a level funded budget. So, could you explain for not only the folks in the room, but anybody watching at home, and certainly town meeting members, what the difference between a level service and a level funded budget would be?
Sure. So, a level service budget would take into consideration the existing services and maintaining those services, but also recognizing that the fact that those services have a cost increase year over year. So, a level service budget would naturally increase based upon the natural increase of, say, salary, fringe, and other operating costs like utilities, fuel, for example. A level funded budget is the same budget from the preceding fiscal year. So, that would have to take in consideration service reductions because the costs to provide those services, as I just mentioned, go up year over year. And so, if you have a level service budget from the previous year, it's only natural that we have to cut back on the services provided in order to pay for the costs that were associated in providing the reduced services.
Sure. And services would be providing police protection, fire protection, road paving.
Public works.
Public works, and also school-side education, transportation, things like that. So, that, we're talking level service, providing the same level of all of those services, depending, and every individual house, every individual resident is going to consume a different makeup of those services, but the general community consumes all of them. So, level service would be to maintain the same level of provision of those specific items from last year with cost of living and other, other costs associated with that.
Adjusted accordingly.
All right. And then, level funded would be, if we spent $300 million last year, we're only going to spend $300 million this year, and we'll have to figure out what services that I just talked about, that we're not going to provide, that we're going to pull back, we have less and few, or fewer services grammatically, fewer services next year than we did last year in order to stay within that $300.
Because of the natural inflation of those costs.
Right. Because no matter what Plymouth wants to do, the cost of living is going up on a national, international level, contracted services are going up, all of these other things are going up. So, now, you mentioned in that explanation and also in your presentation as well, that like 22% of the town's budget you'd labeled as fringe, so that's fringe benefits, right?
That's fringe benefits, so it's health insurance, those, other benefits that the employee would receive by being an employee of the town.
Okay. So, and it was 48% was their salary. 22% about was their, their benefit package.
That's right.
So, then you get to that about 70% number for, and the employees in the town, whether it's their pay or their benefits.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, we've, and we've talked, you and I, and Mr. Quintle, as well as Ms. Jackson, and previously, Ms. Badger, as well as Dr. Campbell and Dr. Blaisdell have talked repeatedly over the last several months about trying to collaborate better with the schools, having to have a proactive approach with the schools so that we can get ahead of the mutual challenges that we're dealing with. Because at the end of the day, the community is getting one tax bill. From their perspective, we're all in this together, and from our perspective, we should probably all be in this together. But we talked about that 61-39 split. So, we, we have 39 on the town side, what we're responsible for. That's police, fire, DPW, energy and environment, everything else that's, that's in that 39%. And the schools is the 61%, if you put their benefits on their side of the equation, right?
That is correct.
And you mentioned if, you know, we've been trying to be creative on our side to stay within that 39. You mentioned some difficult decisions. So, we've been, the town has been making efforts to try and live within its means for a number of years, right?
Yeah. And one thing I didn't point out during my presentation, if I could, that, you know, we, we had to make a number of cuts in order to balance this budget. But even after making those cuts, without having to get deep into cutting services, we still had a, had a negative deficit of approximately $300,000, $300,000, thereabouts. And so, what we did is we implemented this, this, I would say, creative way to balance the budget, what we, what is now known as like instituting a vacancy factor. And so, this vacancy factor, as, was spread across multiple departments, and each department was assigned a vacancy number in which they would have to achieve. And so, you know, using DPW, for example, in order for them to achieve their $100,000 vacancy factor, they would have to look at their, their staffing level, and they would, they'd be forced to delay hirings in order to fill that $100,000 vacancy that's been created. And so, that, you know, if we didn't do that, then the, the alternative would, would have been to reduce our staffing levels by $300,000. And we thought it was the most appropriate course of action to give the department heads the tools to make decisions within their organization and then budget appropriately. And so, although I hadn't mentioned it, it was something that we had to implement for the very first time this year in order to balance this, the town side of the budget.
Okay. And that's important, like the vacancy factor, whether it's something that's being reduced without getting rid of a live individual that's laying somebody off or firing them, is, is a factor that's put into the budgetary process. But also, in terms of the budgetary process, let's say suddenly the police department. If a police officer quits today, we're not going to be able to high, post that application and hire them within a couple of weeks.
That's right.
It takes months and months, like six to nine months, to get a new officer from a vacancy that we didn't anticipate to when we can replace that vacancy. But we have to budget, if we have 127 officers, more or less, we need to budget for, and we want to have 127 to meet the needs of this community, we have to budget for all 127 officers for 52 weeks a year.
That's right.
Whether or not they're going to be in those positions for all 52 weeks or not, correct?
That is correct. In order to maintain the services that we need, especially in law enforcement, we would budget for a full complement of police officers. But this goes back to my earlier conversation. Sometimes when we don't get that full complement, it requires us to spend more money in overtime because we still have to provide those services.
Right.
So, which then will drive our overtime budget.
Right.
So, you know, especially, that's why I'm saying the overtime budget is a moving target based upon the number of vacancies we have. upon the number of vacancies we have in various departments.
Right. And then the police department as an example, I mean, the schools have a lot of unfunded and underfunded mandates that they're subject to, but police, there's officer safety, there's post, you know, police reform, things of that that they have to comply to as well, comply with as well, so that they have to take into account and certainly want our officers and our community to be safe in order to do that. So overtime, overtime is factored in there. But in terms of, so say, so say we had 127 officers budgeted for 52 weeks a year, but at the end of the year, we only ever had 100 officers. So there were 27 officers that were not budgeted the whole time. That money still raised and appropriated, but it's often used for things like, say, like snow and ice removal. It's transferred around to put into that because something like snow and ice is something we can deficit spend, but we can't reduce it year-over-year, but we can transfer through something like a FinCom transfer request to pay that money later towards that purpose. So it's not, it's not useless that we have that. Even if we don't fill those vacancies, there's still a purpose for that money that is serving the community, correct?
Yeah, so, I mean, that is one example that certainly if there's a surplus, we'll say, of available dollars in any one given department, and we have a program like snow and ice that we are, we are forced to deficit spend, you know, we could do a year-end transfer the last two months of the year in order to move those dollars over to cover those costs. If that's not the case, because we've had some, say, mild winters this past couple of years, if those dollars would then fall to free cash and be certified appropriately by department revenue, and then it's the free cash dollars that we use to fund the vast majority of our capital improvement projects. And so, you know, we've had a healthy free cash reserve this past year, and you'll see in our capital improvement program, we're able to accomplish a lot more this year than we have in previous years, and that's to the point that you just made, that we've had some money available left over, especially in the police department, because we haven't been able to achieve that 100% complement of police officers over the last couple of years.
Right. So whether it's snow and ice or whether it's buying a DPW truck or a fire truck the next year, or some other piece of equipment, it's going to meet a need in the community regardless of how that money is ultimately used.
Yeah.
And avoiding a future tax increase to pay for that in lieu of that free cash.
Well, a tax increase, but I would say just as important is that, you know, we, these are still needs, right?
Right.
So we still have a need for a ladder truck at $2.2 million. And so, if we have a healthy free cash reserve, because we've had some surplus dollars remaining at the end of the year, we can buy that cash versus having to go out to borrow those dollars and have to pay, you know, interest rates on that. So, again, you know, having free cash helps us on many different fronts because if we don't have the money available, then we have to borrow those dollars. Because, again, these aren't wants, these are needs that the departments are seeking.
Right. Now, part of the presentation that you gave is not just the operating budget, but also the stabilization funds that we're looking to put money in, pavement management, paving roads, we've had, we're increasing that money that we're putting into pavement management to address a long-term issue with roads in terms of not being able to pave enough as to keep up with what's going on. We're also aware that, you know, we're putting more money in there to see what the capacity for us to accomplish that work is because there's only so many human beings in the area that can do this type of work as well. But we're looking to, residents want their roads to be paved. I mean, one of the biggest complaints we get is the potholes in front of X person's house. But we're putting money in that to address a known need in the community, right?
Absolutely. Especially when it comes to roads. You know, the previous road program that still exists was a program that was instituted, I believe, in 2017, which Ms. Barrett came up with a creative idea to take the delta of the motor vehicle excise and use those dollars to fund a road management program. And so, over the course of the last five years, we've been able to spend, utilizing that program, about $15 million, a borrowed money for that program. So that money's been already borrowed, we're paying on that with the delta of the motor vehicle excise tax, but now we still got to continue to make improvements on our roads. So, the program we've shifted to now, you know, is money that's been raised and appropriate, doesn't require borrowing, so we're saving on interest, and is allowing us to continue to invest in our road management program over the long term.
And something like the Nuclear Mitigation Stabilization Fund, the $500,000, we're looking to put in that towards the potential purchase of some or all of that property, which when we renegotiated the pilot agreement, we estimated in 2023, the 1,530.35 acres would cost about 35 to 50 millions, more than that now because valuations have gone up across the board. But that $500,000 goes towards a fund that we'd like to use to purchase some of that or all of that property, depending on how much we can, you know, other funding sources we can pull together towards that end. But if those 1,530.35 acres were to be developed with three-acre zoning, that's about 510 residential by right units that somebody could build if they were to buy all of it, or if they were to build higher density with special permits and those types of restrictions, that would be a significant recurring expense for this community, correct? To deliver services to the people that would live in that development.
I would say that if that 1,500 acres was built out, to your point about 500 new homes, based upon the previous presentation by Dr. Campbell, at $22,000 per student, you can quickly do the math on the cost of providing education services alone for sizable development like that, which, and so on the public safety side, certainly we'd be including increased number of police officers, but we've already had conversations about a fire station having to be built in that area. So to your point, significant dollars on the town side will have to be invested in order to accommodate and provide services to a development that size.
Right. And for the average taxpayer, $500,000 deposit into that account would be about $14, the current tax rate, whereas we're talking about a recurring expense that would exist forever in this community, right?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brindisi. Dr. Campbell. So, 7,038 were enrolled at October 1st, but now you're up to about 7,116.
7,116, yes.
Okay. And so obviously that number could fluctuate.
It fluctuates day-to-day.
Yeah. But that's what you've got to increase. Now, what was notable to me was your 41% increase in pre-K enrollment, because all your other numbers were, you know, in the margins, up and down, kind of, not always leveled, but, you know, around the same. 41, are we, so that's going to mean next year in kindergarten, you're going to see if a majority of those students stay in district, you're going to see a big increase there, correct?
Yeah, so keep it, so the, those numbers, the majority of those numbers are students that are receiving special education support. So those numbers will continue, correct? So you'll see that pre-K continue into kindergarten, first grade, et cetera.
Okay. And do we have, is it, is it possible for us to know yet, or is it too early to tell if the pre-pre-K class is also what the size of that is? Is this like a one-year bump, or we have no idea?
I don't have that number.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. It's just, it's notable just because of the vast.
We are seeing, our current, well, our, well, anecdotally, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of early intervention. So the early intervention numbers, which drives that pre-K, is up considerably. Whether or not it's at that.
Yeah.
Number, I can't tell you, but it's up.
Okay. So you talked, or you and Dr. Blaisdell talked about the shortfall between, we had this arrangement about expenditures for new growth, new revenue, that we'd maintain the 61-39 split. So when new growth comes in, two and a half comes in, we'd split that to 31, 39, 61, and any other, any other state aid, 60, that's unanticipated above what we budgeted, 69, 31. But that still left you, and you talked about the, working with the state about custodians, and I think that's very creative, that's to your credit. Now, the 520 left over, could you just expand more on how that, how you anticipate to make that particularly short?
Sure. So it's early, so we're looking at, so as Dr. Blaisdell said, sometimes enrollment goes up, it goes down.
Sure.
So we don't know, we see a lot of change in terms of staffing at the elementary level, for example. So let's say hypothetically, there's a school that doesn't need a teacher, we wouldn't fill that vacancy. Retirements, there's an inherent savings in retirements, that sort of thing. So really by taking, you know, just sort of delaying it and seeing where the revenues come in terms of state aid and all of these things, it gives us a better picture of what we're dealing with. So, hence the reason why we feel, though, based on the last five years where we've had to make reductions, that this number being smaller than any other number that we've sort of been working with, that we can, we can live within this, so long as there aren't any other surprises, as I said, with other entitlement grants and allocations.
Right. Because at the end of the day, you have to provide, you're under mandates to provide these types of services.
Correct.
You have a lot of decisions, before your budget's even created, you have these unfunded, underfunded mandates that require you to do certain things, whether you'd like to or not, and you're trying to meet those demands of the community, correct?
Exactly, yep.
Now, last year, I remember the OSD increase from the year prior went up about like 14%.
It was like 14.1%.
Yeah.
It was significantly, over a million dollars in tuitions alone, just with that increase. So this is, and prior to that, keep in mind, it was around 1% or less than 1%.
Right, 1 or 2, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, 2 and 1/2, I think, was the largest in a 10-year period. So that was significant, and that was a significant increase to our budget a couple of years ago. So this number is, while it's less, it's still an increase, to Dr. Blaisdell's point, that some of the schools will petition the state to get sort of increase over that number, and we've seen a couple come in.
Mm-hmm.
But these, again, these are things that we have to approach every year. This happens, this has happened in my 30-years in education, so, but we're, we're happy that the OSD number is certainly not at 14% because that would have been, had a significant impact. But again, trying to maintain the quality of services and the depth of services that we have here in Plymouth really helps to bring that cost down. So by investing in our in-district programs, that OSD number is less impactful on us because it doesn't affect our own programming, obviously.
Okay. And was it like a 4% increase this year?
Just over 4. This year is 3.67, last year was 4. Next year is 3.67.
Okay. So between the two, it's almost like 18%. I know compounding percentages, it's not exactly.
Yeah, it continues to go up, yeah.
Correct. Right, so it's 14, it's 4%.
And then over the 14.
Almost 4 on top of last year's 14.
Correct.
Right. So, and then, you know, we talked about, talked about the pay, obviously the town side also, we're all on the same contract cycles, and, you know, paying our teachers a fair wage encourages more applicants and for people to stay in the jobs that they already have. And obviously, the value of an education in Plymouth, whether you have students in the schools or not, impacts property values and also your community, you're living in a community of people that are properly educated versus a community of people that are not.
It's a wonderful benefit to the entire community.
Correct.
I would agree.
So, but there is, you know, so there is a value there, and I just want to highlight that for folks. And I know you have a lot of mandates, you know, special education, transportation within the district, you don't get regional reimbursement yet, I know you're working with the state delegation on that, I appreciate that, McKinney-Vento. I know that you have a lot of decisions, like I said earlier, that are made for you before the budget even starts, and I think you guys, you know, do the best that you can within the means that you have. I think last year, when we had this meeting, there was a different dynamic between our two groups, and part of the meetings that we've been having over this past year were to prevent that from happening again so we could work collaboratively, because as I said at the beginning of my comments, that is not how other folks in this community view town and schools, we're all just one entity to them, and we should be acting more like that. And I think the work that you and the school committee and the rest of school administration have done over the past year have really demonstrated that you're committed to working collaboratively with us, so I want to thank you for that, and I appreciate the efforts that everyone has put in on that front.
Yeah, we feel very, we feel very fortunate to have the collaborative relationship that we have with, with the town and have worked with administration for many years as well and feel confident that, again, we're one community and we're trying, we're all trying to balance our budgets, we understand the challenges, and we feel good about that. So, appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Ms. Shaw?
No, I answered my own question.
Did you?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Anyone, Mr. Malaguti?
Thank you. Mr. Campbell and Mr. Blaisdell, if I could ask a couple of questions of you. So earlier in the presentation, you were talking about your software and asking if there was either redundancies or needed software, unneeded software, stuff like that. Could you explain a little bit further on that? And within this question, a number of years ago, the town and schools implemented a consolidation committee that one of the attributes said that was actually talking about the sharing and consolidation of software programming and stuff like that. I'm wondering if that's still being in play for this, or actually as an option for this or next year's budget cycle?
Thank you for your question. So in, so to answer, I'll answer the second question first, so consolidation, we've had lots of conversations about that and certainly are open to looking at how we can be more efficient and if there are any redundancies in our services, the way we approach that. So we're clearly open, and I know I speak for the school committee regarding that. Technology speaking, that's not a part of what we've done in this budget. In consolidation of technology, we're really looking at software databases that sort of encompass the work that our students are doing. So looking at those usage reports, trying to sort of streamline our approach to those so we're able to kind of reduce some of our software packages that we're using with our students and prioritize them, I should say.
Thank you. And the other part, I have a question for the technology, is I know, I can't remember if it was last year or the year before that, when the district was looking at the need for the Chromebooks and other things, there was talk about either the students paying for a certain lease of that, or if the schools were looking at other additional funding or other grant opportunities for those type of expenditures?
Yep. So that is something, my future concerns, I think that was on my slide right there, technology replacement, right? So that's something that as we move forward, not for next year, we feel good about the next two fiscal years in terms of our technology. We were not a one-to-one district when COVID hit, and what one-to, what I mean by one-to-one is a device in every student's hand. That was very problematic when we shut our schools down. Students did not have access, we're trying to educate students in a remote environment, many of them didn't have wireless access at home, let alone a computer. They were trying to do work on a phone, a family member's phone, going out to Panera or outside of our schools to try to get access. We were able to, because of the one silver line, I'll say, from COVID, was some of the federal stimulus dollars that we received, and we were able to alleviate that and fix that. So we were able to go one-to-one, again, all grant funds supported to correct that. So we're now a one-to-one district, so our students use Chromebooks, which are very inexpensive devices, there's no hardware inside them, it's all in the cloud. We are, we're okay with our devices, but the next couple of years, again, based on the operation systems that those devices are using and the age of those, our tech staff is very good about fixing them if there's issues, but we feel confident that we're okay for the next couple of years.
Thank you. I just have one comment, this is probably more directed to Mr. Blaisdell, about the Not to toot my own horn for a little bit, but as Vice Chair of the Energy Committee, I would like to offer anytime that yourself or the energy consultant or coordinator within your department would like to, so we can look at collaboration on projects. So I know we helped with one of the things that Mr. Cahill is looking at for the solar arrays for the schools and all that, which is, which I believe is going to be a nice boon for both sides, for budgetary concerns and stabilization. But anything that you think is on the table that you may need or whatever, I would love for cooperation and ID exchange for that committee.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
And then, Mr. Champ, I just have one question for Mr. Brindisi and Ms. Barrett. For whomever is the one that could answer this, I know in the cherry sheets that we were looking at for the reductions and the offsets that we get at certain programs that the state has that partly gets siphoned off from the cherry sheet allotment to us for either like air pollution and all those other sort of things. I know we had one that was a decent amount of money for when we had the active. I know we had one that was a decent amount of money for when we had the active MBTA station. And I don't know if we are still getting that knocked off the cherry sheet, or if that funding has been restored back since we no longer have an active MBTA station?
So, when the station closed, we were charged on our cherry sheet for that station. So, when it closed, for a number of years, it was zero that we were charged. And just recently, within the last couple of years, we're charged like, it's a very small amount. It's like, I think I looked at it yesterday, it's like twenty-four thousand dollars. I'm not sure what that charge is for necessarily, but there is a charge on there for MBTA.
Okay, thank you, and I only ask that because I know a few years ago, looking at the cherry sheets when it was active, I think it was probably like a hundred eighty or so thousand, something like that, after the deduction from the Gator line that was on the side, I didn't know if we were still paying for that or not, thank you.
If I just could, I just, I can say that in my previous community, we were a budding MBTA community, so we didn't have a communal rail. And we also had a cherry sheet offset as well. So, that's very common, though, even though you don't have a station in your community, if you're in a budding community, you still have to pay into that program.
Ms. Shaw? And then, Mr. Blaisdell?
Mr., Dr. Campbell, can you just briefly maybe explain a little bit about the process of a preschool student qualifying to be in the preschool for services? I don't, I don't know if a lot of people understand what goes into qualifying for those services. So, it might be good to explain that, just briefly explain the process.
Yeah, so, two ways, sometimes it's coming from early interventions of students that are receiving what we call EI services before age three. But upon age three, there are students that have an identified disability that would be eligible for services. So, our staff are going in, doing evaluations, working, coordinating with early intervention agencies, sometimes other preschools. In addition, other students may, there may be some concerns that are brought up once they're in our preschool or hit that age where we're doing evaluations in our team of teachers that are in our preschool, whether it's our speech pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, special education teachers, et cetera, teachers of the visually impaired, if students have complex vision issues, are a part of that process to determine the scope of services and the delivery of those services through an individual education program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Campbell, with that question.
This, I'll segue right into my question. So, we have a very unique community, a very diverse community, and it's a very large community. And we have, offer a lot of great programs for our students, you know, our special needs, it's, you know, we have great, you know, the autism and different mental health special needs, as well as we have a language, a lot of different languages, you know, with some of the new residents coming in. And so, we need to have, we need those services, which is in the transportation costs with the size of the town, which is the reason why, you know, we have all these expenses. So, the, I saw the, the cost of educating a pupil, is it twenty-two thousand? Is that, I think that's what I saw.
Yes, the last FY23's last published.
And so, my question was, and I understand why it's that high, but how do we compare to other communities, if you?
So, if I can go back.
If you know.
Yeah, well, again, I'm going to show you, again, it's an old slide, but where, where we compare, just to be clear, our special education expenditures are par with the state, so I want to be clear on that. We're not spending more for special education than the state average. Where our special ed costs go up is the transportation piece, but what we're, what we're educating, for educating our kids is comparable to the state. So, if you look at state comparisons into the dollars, we're not spending an extraordinary more amount of money towards special education than other communities. And I think by investing in district, we'd been able to keep that cost down. But when you talk about, sorry, I know I have a lot of slides, folks, but we, and you've seen me show this slide before, but the per pupil expenditure is really determined by a number of categories. So, again, we don't determine these communities, this is, these communities are determined by the state. So, there are districts that are of comparable wealth, and there are districts of comparable demographics. These are districts we've been compared to, again, there are others as well. But when you look at that breakdown of what we spent on administration, instructional practices, teachers, teaching supplies, professional development, et cetera, et cetera, as Dr. Blaisdell said, we're up, you know, again, the state average, we're over several hundred dollars. But when you look at that money, where it's going in comparison to the state, it's really benefits in fixed costs.
My question was, what's the dollar figure per person, for a pupil, that it costs?
That's what that, so that's what this is, right here.
No, no, I know, but compare like other towns in the South Shore, for instance. I just want to let people know that, you know, we're not overspending in the cost of what they are.
No, we may be over in comparison to other communities.
Yeah, but it might be a little lower, but when you compare.
But it's in these categories right here, so the ones that are being pointed out here, the transportation piece is encompassed in pupil services. So, when you see twenty-seven ninety, our transportation, I did, part of the bill that we're trying to get and really look at, get relief for communities like Plymouth, and it also applies to other communities as well, that are rural communities that have to transport large areas. We're, I say, we're a suburban community with an urban fridge with rural conditions, right? So, we've got it all, we've got dirt roads, we have very little roads that go east to west. So, to get from here to there, you have to go up north to go south, or to go east, I should say. So, it's very complex, as Dr. Blaisdell pointed out, the transportation. So, when you look at our, how we're spending money for our students, this is how we're spending money for students on average, right? The cost breakdown, it's in two areas, it's the insurance and the benefits, which we're all aware of, right? And pupil services, which is primarily transportation. So, when we spent two years ago, I want to say it was twelve-hundred-seventy dollars per pupil, and the state average was seven-hundred-seventy, say, we were several hundred dollars, we're several hundred dollars over per pupil on what we're paying for transportation. And it's not because we pay more for our buses, because our bus contract is actually good. What we pay for that bus is actually much more competitive than our neighboring communities. What our challenge is, is the number of buses we need in order to transport our students, so that's our challenge. So, when we have more buses, because we're not, we're the size of, you could take the seven, eight communities around us, and they're not as big as Plymouth. So, it's hard to compare us to the neighboring communities when it comes to transportation. So, we're not, to your original question, Mr. Blaisdell, we're not spending more educationally, education instructional dollars than our neighboring districts. In fact, we were paying less for our teachers, right, until recently. Where we're spending more is in transportation, and we're trying to address that aggressively.
Just to make it simple, the services justify the cost.
Correct.
That's, that's all I wanted to make that point, that the services justify the cost.
Mr. Mahoney?
Good, thank you.
Chris, so just picking up on transportation and the state delegation, two of the three members are now new. Have you had, have you had an initial sit-down with them?
Yes.
And addressed their concerns specifically on transportation? And we've talked about this, this is an annual discussion, how inherently unfair it is with respect to the geographical area that we cover.
Yeah.
And reimbursement for regional school, schools, where we know that geographically, we're bigger than Whitman Hansen, Dennis Yarmouth, Silver Lake, et cetera. So, that situation has gone on for too long, and was that at least brought up at any meeting that you had?
Two already, so we've, with the new delegation, with Senator's office, as well as our new state rep, who's intimately familiar with the process and the resolution, actually, that the School Committee Association endorsed, which was our resolution in terms of transportation reform and trying to find some extraordinary relief for communities like Plymouth. I'm happy to say that our delegation is working to have a bill that's going before the Senate, that's been supported by the state reps and going to the Senate, that could potentially provide some financial relief if it were supported. Kind of the idea that I threw out there a couple of years ago, really looking at, trying to find a funding formula that's familiar to all people, and that's special education extraordinary relief, so kind of taking that thinking and finding a way to apply that to transportation for communities that are spending an extraordinary amount over the state average. So, really trying to level the playing field in terms of what we're spending to transport students. So, hopefully, this bill will get some traction, but it could bring some relief if it were supported.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Lala?
Town manager, please. Derek, can you bring up the town and school general fund expenses?
Jade, Jade, can you switch the slides? Thank you.
Just to clarify, something that I need to know.
Mr. Lala, which slide were you referring to?
It's the town, it's.
Okay.
That's the one. So, the section that says school. Salaries are at ninety-eight million, expenses at forty million, debt services at eight million, and fringe benefits at thirty-seven million, forty billion. That tolls up at one-hundred-and-eighty-four million roughly. Is that one-eighty-four, is that the number that the town pays to keep the doors open to the schools, essentially?
I would say this is the number that the town pays to provide education services to this community.
Got it, so just, just help me understand this. So, whoops.
Just one second.
Because I'm confused.
We just want to be clear, so what we did in this whole process was, the whole operating budget for the general fund has salaries, expenses, fringe benefits, debt service. Each of those categories is associated with either a town department or a school department. And when I say school department, we include charter schools, because we are charged a charter school assessment. We include separate line items in the budget that are voted for the Medicaid program and the out-of-district transportation. So, there's all of that. And then, we break down the debt service for town projects versus school projects. So, that one-hundred-and-eighty-four million is for all educational expenses across the board.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so one-hundred-and-eighty-four million to provide education for the children of Plymouth. And are there roughly seven thousand? No, what's the school population with this number?
So, and I want to speak for Ms. Barrett, but that, we have seven-thousand-one-hundred-sixteen students. That number does not represent the seven-thousand-one-hundred-sixteen students, it represents all Plymouth children that reside in Plymouth. There are well over a thousand students that are Plymouth residents that are not in the Plymouth public schools. So, that's going to be factored into that number as well.
Okay, so what is the number that we need to factor into that?
I only have the number for.
Typically, if you have.
So, you're trying to get a per pupil cost out of the one-hundred-and-eighty-four million?
I'm trying to get an accurate number that I can understand, because the number that I get is roughly twenty-six thousand dollars per.
So, what, I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if it necessarily means anything, that, that number that you're trying to look for.
Okay.
So, when the school, when Department of Education and secondary education develops the per pupil expenditure for every community in Massachusetts, there are items that they exclude from that calculation. One of them is debt service, one of them is, there is like a transportation cost per student, but they, they, they break out some things. So, we, as part of our end-of-year process, the school department and the town, actually, the school department fills out this end-of-year report. The town puts all of these town costs on there. We put on their debt service, we put on their, the assessments that are charged by the state for the charter school and for school choice. We put on there all of the expenditures on the town side, which include the benefits and the insurance and other items. So, everything's in, that number includes everything.
Understood, so the everything number is one-hundred-and-eighty-four million for the education of the Plymouth schoolchildren?
Yeah, I mean, it also includes debt service, so includes principal and interest on every school project that we've ever borrowed for that still has debt service, yeah.
You have to pay your debt services every year to maintain loan balances, et cetera, I understand. But what is the pupil number, if I need to know, that goes into the one-hundred-and-eighty-four million?
I think, like I said, the state at this point in time has only released the per pupil through FY23. They haven't released FY24 yet, because the end-of-year report that Lynn was just talking about was due on September 30th. There's districts in the state that still have not even submitted that end-of-year report, even though it was due September 30th. So, they will not come out with that per pupil for FY24 until probably sometime this summer, probably, I would say probably July-ish or so. So, we won't know that number yet. And it's hard to, you can't just simply take the one-hundred-and-eighty-four million dollars and divide it by the seventy-one hundred students. When you look at the calculation, if you were to try and do that on prior year's end-of-year reports, it won't come out, the math won't work. So, you really have, in order to get the per pupil, an accurate per pupil, you really have to wait until the state releases that end-of-year report in July. And yes, it's a couple of years old, unfortunately, but we won't know that number until probably July for FY24. But it, the math will not work if you take that one-eighty-four and divide it by seventy-one hundred kids, it won't work. And it won't even work if you divide it by, let's say we factor in additional kids, it won't work if you come up with seventy-six hundred kids. It just won't work, because the state calculates that number.
Very interesting. I guess we don't do math the way we used to do math, it's different. Another question I have. Actually, I'm going to, I'm going to hold off, thank you very much.
Dr. Blaisdell or Dr. Campbell, could you, could you remind us what the actual school operating budget is? Because we know it's not one-hundred-and-eighty-four million dollars.
You're talking about the proposed school budget?
Yes, the actual operating budget that we would divide the seven-hundred-and-sixteen by.
Right, so when you look at the proposed budget for our next fiscal year for the school department, all right, let me give you an exact number. It's one-hundred-twenty-seven million, two-hundred-twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-seventy-four dollars for the services to provide our kids.
Chris, if somebody wanted to calculate a meaningful number, it might be more appropriate to use that, since that's the actual cost of providing. to use that since that's the actual cost of providing educational services to the Plymouth public schools, students, correct?
Certainly in comparison for us, year to year, what we're spending to educate our kids, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Then I'm going to go online.
Mr. Brindisi, could you come up? Could you more deeply explain the discrepancy between the one-hundred-and-eighty-four million and the one-hundred-and-twenty-seven million?
Well, I think Ms. Barrett explained, and she can probably explain it best, but the one-hundred-and-twenty-seven million is just the Plymouth public schools. There are other schools in this, that we, that the town has to pay for. So, for example, we may have out-of-district students that go to the agricultural school, for example, we have to pay for that. We may have other students that go to other school districts and then the charter schools. So, the delta between the one-eighty-four, one-twenty-seven represent those students that do not attend Plymouth public schools.
Thank you. And are there students who come into our district similar to how we send kids out of district? And perhaps that's a question for you, Dr. Campbell?
Oh, for those schools. We don't, we don't operate on school choice, so entered district school choice, that's something that if we did, if we, if the school committee voted in June, but, you know, did not vote to oppose school choice, we would be bringing students from other communities in, but we do not, we do not offer that.
I think I heard your assistant superintendent say it's a very few number of students.
So sometimes, on occasion, there may be a student that's tuitioned in to a program to help support a program, but it's few and far between.
So it's not, it's not a one-for-one situation--
No, not at all.
--in the community.
No, no.
So, so the amount, I think what's frustrating most taxpayers is they see that it costs one-hundred-and-eighty-four million to educate the students, the people who live in Plymouth, right?
Children that reside in Plymouth.
And there's a lot of funny math, I think, that goes into the way that the state calculates things.
Sure.
So, and I think what Mr. Lawler's line of questioning was, how many students are educated by using that one-hundred-and-eighty-four million dollar figure? And I think what he'd like to do is simply divide that number of people, and I don't mean to speak for you, Ms. Lawler, but I think he simply wants to divide that number of students into one-hundred-and-eighty-four million.
Understood. So if you look at the one-hundred-and-eighty-four million and you just take the seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixteen students that the Plymouth public schools have today, that comes out to a figure of like twenty-five thousand plus per student. But then, these dollars are twenty-six dollars. The dollars that they were showing earlier in their presentation from DESI are from twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. So with increases in, you know, costs, and then plus, you have to add the number of students that go to the charter schools. Because the one-hundred-and-eighty-four includes the tuition that we are charged for the charter schools. So I don't know what that number is. There's a lot of Plymouth kids that go to the charter schools. So you'd have to add those number of students in there too. So that per pupil will probably go down underneath twenty, probably twenty-four something thousand. So with inflation, you know, it seems reasonable.
So, Dr. Campbell, I think what my suggestion would be is for us to have a whole picture in future iterations of this presentation. I've seen this conversation play out in prior year budget hearings just like this one. I think you just, you got to, I mean, you do a great job in updating us with information. As you mentioned, you have many, many slides. But I think you should just game that out in anticipation of these questions. Because the people who are sitting at home, they don't care about the nuances. They want to know how much it costs to educate the people, the kids that live in this town.
I totally agree with that. Having said that, the money that we're proposing, some of that, as Lynn said, is on the town side, we're not aware of that. So I'm not sure how I can, how to best address that when there's hypothetically a thousand students that we're not educating.
Yeah, I think, think to your point, this is, this is the town slide. So, given tonight's conversation, what we can do in the future is we could have, on the school side, a third piece of the pie. You have one that suggests Plymouth public schools are one-twenty-five or thereabouts, and then an other education piece of the pie that represents the charter schools and any other out-of-district costs that the town may have.
Yeah, Mr. President, when I were just speaking, and I think just communication between the two of you to avoid these confusing conversations in the budget hearing would go a long way.
Understood. So if I'm hearing you correctly, there's, so it's the slides that are, the differences in the information that the town is showing in terms of school expenses or student expenses versus what we're showing in terms of student expenses, and I understand that. So it's, I think, getting a handle on the students that don't reside in our schools and how much money is going towards those expenses and trying to find out if we can collectively determine what that difference is so that we have town expenses, Plymouth public schools expenses, additional student expenses, so that the community can see that.
Yeah, I think it would, I think it would go a long way to educating the public. And I think knowing the number of students who are, so this, the one-hundred-and-eighty-four million encompasses both the Plymouth public schools and those other categories, those other buckets that you described. What are the numbers of students who are in those other buckets, I think, would be helpful for the community as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Understood.
Mr. Lala?
Dr. Campbell. So, just to get this square, back to the one-eighty-four number. That number on expense side and fringe side, that has to do with, well, to stay on the fringe side. The fringe side has to do with teachers, insurance, that side of the expense side.
Are you referring to the school department's slides or the town's slides? The town's slide?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask the town manager or Ms. Barrett to answer that. I didn't build this slide, so I can't tell you what that says.
So what was the question? I'm sorry.
The fringe benefit side?
Fringe benefits.
The fringe.
Is that, within the schools, is that attached to the teachers' fringe benefits?
Yeah, so the fringe includes, on the both on town side and the school side, it includes health insurance, life insurance, dental. It includes pension, the pension assessment that's divided up between town and school retirees. It includes workers' comp, it includes any type of fringe benefit, includes employer share of Medicare, includes, there's a whole bunch of line items in there.
Okay.
It also includes health and dental and life insurance for school and town retirees. So not just the active employees, but the retirees are included in this also. And that's one number that I know DESI does not include in the per pupil, is the cost of the retiree health insurance, just for the active teachers they include.
Okay. And on the expense side of this right here, let's say, school expense of forty, oh, I see, I see where you're going.
So the expense--
So it's backwards on the chart that I have. But on the expense side, what does that encompass?
For the school, it includes their expense side. So they showed earlier their different objects. They have like six objects, three of them are salaries, three of them are expenses. So the three expense objects that are in their budget are included in that expense number. Plus, we include the charter school assessment that comes from the state, which is over nine million dollars. I don't have the figure necessarily right in front of me, but it's like nine or ten million dollars for that. It includes any other assessments that are on the cherry sheet that are school-related. There's one for special education, there's one for school choice, because there are students in Plymouth that go to other schools that we get charged school choice for. And there are some other expense items included in there that are on the town side budget. For example, our property and liability insurance, that's in a town, town insurance line item that gets voted at town meeting, but we allocate between the town and the school for property and liability, for the school buildings, for the school board liability, all of that. So there's insurance in there also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, can you hear us online?
Yes.
And your name for the record, please?
Lorenzo Pizarro.
Okay. Did you have a question for the superintendent or the town manager?
I do, thank you. To the chair, thank you for the presentations. I had a question regarding the breakdown. Mr. Brindisi, you mentioned that it's been this sixty-one, thirty-nine percent breakdown for, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but trying to echo back that it was this way for years. Have you, has, there been any benchmarking against this? Because when we think about at the margins, when you're looking at thirty-one, thirty-nine, and sixty-one, any shifts in percentages either way is significant from a services, core services point of view. Have you benchmarked any comparable towns that do this kind of breakdown? Is this normal?
Well, I can say that I haven't done any benchmarking or done any, done an analysis of other communities. I can tell you my experience that I've worked in other communities that had similar breakdowns, not certainly not a sixty-one, thirty-nine, but more like a sixty-five, thirty-five split. I know town managers who have told me that their conversations with their school superintendents, that when they look at new revenues, they share the cost fifty-fifty. So there's different models for different, you know, my experience, but looking at this community, we all thought, looking at the trends of the last couple of years, the sixty-one, thirty-nine split was fair and it was balanced, and I agree. You know, there may be a time where that number moves to the right or to the left for either side of us, and we'll have to adjust accordingly.
Thank you for your answer.
Sure.
No further questions.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Jade? Neil?
Bring it back. Sir?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Brindisi, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you introduced the budget, you said it was a three-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollar budget? Did I get that number right?
Yes.
Okay, when you add up those two figures, it comes out about twenty million short. Can you explain where the differences--
Go ahead. Yeah, so when we budget, we look at everything. So, town meeting votes a budget, but there are other items that we have to budget for. And those are the state and county cherry sheet assessments that are about eleven million dollars, and the allowance for abatements and exemptions for taxes. That's about one-point-six, one-point-six million dollars. Those get raised on the recap sheet, they get paid out of our general fund revenues. So we always have to take those into consideration when developing the budget, because if you don't, then you're spending twelve million dollars on something else that you don't have the money for. So, that's what the, and those items are not voted at town meeting.
Mr. Candy?
Thank you. And Steve, the remainder would be the enterprise funds, which are treated differently, as you know, in the budget for viewers at home, paid by the ratepayers. But if you look at that total budget, three-twenty-five, that's where that total number, what Lynn just said, as well as the enterprise funds.
Any other questions or comments? Last call. Okay, then. I'll say thank you to the FinCom for coming and joining us, and the school committee, the superintendent, and staff, thank you. And I'll wait for the other two boards to close out in adjourn, and then we're going to take a five-minute recess.
All right, I'll adjourn the Plymouth School Committee meeting at eight oh five PM. Thank you.
And I will adjourn the advisory and finance committee meeting of January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five at eight oh five PM.
And we will take a five-minute recess.
So we'll be looking for the minutes for that so that we can see what was discussed. I want to come back to the topic of the Plymouth Foundation. There are still no answers, particularly with regard to their role in the Hedges Pond, sand and gravel mining and development project. Under the state's conflict of interest law, there are seven municipal employees who serve on that Plymouth Foundation as officers and directors and who are therefore covered by, as municipal employees, covered by the conflict of interest law. One of them is the town manager, Mr. Brindisi, Mr. Hartman, Mr. Quintal, Mr. Wallace on the ZBA, Kevin O'Reilly on the ZBA, Jane Kimball on the Economic Development Committee, and of course, Mr. Cole himself, who is clearly an employee. So as you know, the Plymouth Foundation owns the land at seventy-one Hedges Pond Road. The town sold it to the foundation for one dollar. It was viewed by the community as conservation land. The foundation has a development plan that involves commercial development and sand and gravel mining. The planning board recommended approving that project over the objection of the Cedar Real Steering Committee and over the two legal opinions that it was provided, following a detailed review of the bylaw by myself and Mr. Abbott, a well-known attorney in the community. The town select board and the building inspector received over one thousand letters from the community asking that that project be rejected. Yet, on January sixteenth, the building inspector ignored the public opinion and the two legal opinions and granted a building permit to the Plymouth Foundation to conduct sand and gravel mining on that property and develop it. Again, we have a town employee granting a permit to an organization that the town manager serves on as a director. This is, if not an appearance of a conflict of interest, certainly multiple conflicts of interest under the state's ethics law. And this is not the first appearance of a conflict of interest involving the Plymouth Foundation. A public records request of many thousands of pages of minutes shows their closed-door discussions--
Ms. Shannon, do you need a little more time?
I do need a little more time.
Okay.
A few more minutes. Matters that this board discusses routinely in executive session are then the subject of discussions by the Plymouth Foundation in its meetings, according to the minutes. So, in our view, we are asking that all the municipal employees on the Plymouth Foundation resign, that it comply with the open meeting law. An open meeting law complaint has been filed against the Plymouth Foundation because it is a public body under the open meeting law. And the two million, two-point-six million dollars in revenue that the Plymouth Foundation has appears to be largely and solely derived from land deals involving town land, including the property at one-oh-six Hedges Pond Road, where there was a sand and gravel mining operation for many years that generated revenue, as shown on the Plymouth Foundation's tax returns. So we want accountability. That project should not go ahead at seventy-one Hedges Pond Road until all of these issues are resolved. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Jade, is there anyone online you know?
Good evening. My name is John Platt, and I'm speaking this evening as co-chair of the Town of Plymouth's No Place For Hate Committee. It has been brought to our attention that on January fourteenth, a town meeting member sent an email to more than one hundred recipients, including other town meeting members, with the message "Sig Heil." While the spelling was slightly off in the email, we conclude that the intent of this mess-- was slightly off in the email, we conclude that the intent of this message was to use the phrase notoriously employed to praise Adolf Hitler in Germany leading up to and during World War II. We are told that this was in response to a communication of a policy enacted by the town manager. We are in no way contesting the person's right to criticize such a policy, but rather the specific wording of the response. We are immensely concerned that this phrase would be employed by anyone in 2025, much less by an elected representative in our town. While free speech is, as we all know, protected under the U.S. Constitution, and such a phrase may not exactly fall under widely accepted definitions of hate speech, it is certainly considered anti-Semitic and offensive to Jews and others as well. Hence, we strongly condemn this statement. We would take this opportunity to remind everyone of the guiding principles for Plymouth's staff and elected and appointed officials, which were adopted by the town in a unanimous vote by the Board of Selectmen in 2013. In part, they state, "Serve as a role model in your actions and speech to others, remembering that others will watch, observe, or read about the interaction, and set an example of the proper way to treat each other. Also, there is no place in civil discourse for disparaging talk." Finally, we would also draw your attention to the pledge, which was unanimously adopted by the Plymouth Select Board in 2020. It states in part, "We pledge to seek out information and opportunities to understand how we and others have been affected by racism and social injustice in order to expand our consciousness, to be more aware and sensitive to the use of overt and subtle expressions of racism and racial stereotypes. We have written to the town meeting member who sent the email, giving our opinion of the email and urging that these precepts be taken seriously." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Okay. Town managers report. Mr. Brindisi?
To the select board, I would like to respond to some to some of the misinformation provided this evening because I think it's important for the community to understand the facts of some of these allegations proposed by Meg Sheehan. So first and foremost, the Plymouth Foundation, in which she references, is a 501(c)(3) and under the open meeting law is not required to abide by the open meeting law. So her suggestion they have violated the open meeting law is false and inaccurate. Additionally, she points out my role on the foundation board, the chairman's role on the foundation board, and the director of planning's role on the foundation board. The foundation's principles of operation have, when this was created, I think decades ago, a while before my time and previous town managers, set aside three positions on the board. I believe the board is about 14 members. And the principles of operation require the town manager, the chair, the select board, and the planning director to be members of this board. So that is embedded within those guidelines. As our comments to the Hedges Pond Road property, this is true, that the town town meeting took action, I think it was about seven or eight years ago now, and transferred the this property, I think it's approximately 50 acres on Hedges Pond Road, over to the Plymouth Foundation for the purposes of creating economic development. The only existence the foundation has is to create economic development in this community. So here we are, seven-plus years later. The foundation put this property out to bid, not the town. The it was there was a winning bidder who then proposed a a project, an economic development project that will create many jobs in this community. That project went in front of the planning board, a five-member elected planning board, then approved that project. And then in return, the directive and special services went ahead and issued a building permit. So those are the facts. I know they were clouded by much of the misinformation that was presented by Ms. Sheehan today. Happy to be with any community member who wants to sit and go through the facts and not consume the lack of information that was provided by Ms. Sheehan this evening. So moving on to my 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 town manager's report, I have a number of items I'd like to report to the community this evening. I want to start by saying that there's been a lot of work that's been taking place over Memorial Hall. But I want folks to be aware, especially those folks that attend Memorial Hall, that in the next couple of weeks, they're going to see the installation metal detectors. You know, this is part of our process of increasing security over Memorial Hall and ensuring a safe place for folks to attend. But what I also wanted to let the board know in particular that I've asked Joe Goldberg and Commissioner Braddy, who supervises the Memorial Hall, to come before the board in the next few weeks and provide an update because there's a lot going on over Memorial Hall beyond the metal detectors. They plan to come in to talk about these new security measures. They want to present to the board some new proposed fee structures. And then, as you all know, we've engaged an engineering firm to redesign Memorial Hall. There's there are a number of improvements that need to be made from the roof down to the foundation. And so I've asked them to come in in a couple of weeks to give a full update to all the things that are happening over Memorial Hall. So we're looking forward on that update. Folks need to be aware that this coming Thursday, in this room, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, the Board of Health will be holding an informational update. They're looking for community input. They are considering a ban on takeout Styrofoam containers. And so again, looking for community input on the ban of such containers. So I will keep the board posted as to the outcome of that listening session. Speaking of listening sessions, this this week, this Thursday as well, at 6:00 PM, the last master planning session will be held. That's going to be held at 6:00 PM down at Red Brook. Again, this is the last master planning listening session that will take place. Again, it'll be at 6:00 PM at Red Brook. The town clerk asked me to mention that the street listing, also known as the town census, has been released. Everybody should have already received this at their home. She's asking folks to return this as soon as possible, hopefully within the next two weeks. This, as you all know, helps inform our census and our population for future elections moving forward. I received an update today regarding Halfway Pond Road. There has been some widening of the road. Some folks may have noticed that. This is the intersection of Halfway Pond Road and Long Pond Road I'm referring to. This is the long-awaited signalization over in this area. So there has been some widening of the road. Some of the utilities have been moved. We're waiting to complete the utility movement. And we have been told that we are expecting that the contractor will be on site sometime this spring to complete the project. So I know that especially the folks in that area of town have been waiting probably close to a decade for this signalization to get complete. So looking forward to the completion of that as well. And then I just wanted to end with, well, I want to make one announcement, that Rick Bossy, who's been a longtime stormwater engineer, has now been promoted to acting town engineer. So congratulations to Rick Bossy. This position has been vacant for quite a long time. Rick does an amazing job in stormwater field. And so he's stepped up to, at this time, be our acting town engineer. So we're looking forward to the work that he is going to do in this position. And then the and then our weekly update regarding avian influenza. So we are very focused, as much as we can, and I say we, our communications coordinator, our public health division with Karen Keen, Michelle Braddy, very intentional on trying to keep the community apprised of everything that's going on. It's very concerning for folks that live in neighborhoods that have they see deceased birds in and around their pond area. So our staff have been working very closely with the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. They came to town on Friday. They returned to town yesterday. They came back today, and they removed another 12 birds. In total, the state has removed 67 birds. And as I reported last week, our Animal Control Office continues to take phone calls, and they continue to remove birds and wildlife. To date, they have removed approximately 29 birds and three wildlife. And they will continue to do that. The problem we have faced right now on this issue is that, especially the folks, again, that live around these water bodies, what they're seeing is they're seeing a lot of dead birds frozen in the ice. And the state continues to come out on a daily basis to to assess those environmental conditions. Right now, they do not feel it's safe to go out on the ice and remove these birds. They will continue to make that assessment. Once they feel it's safe, they will remove those birds. But we're asking the community to have patience with us because of those conditions on the ice. The the state will be in town tomorrow. Their focus tomorrow is going to be on deceased birds in the Baker Road area. So and then at last, I'd say, we haven't received any final laboratory results yet. But, you know, as we've mentioned in the past, that all of the evidence points that this is certainly avian influenza. But we haven't said that in a positive fashion just because we're waiting for the lab results to confirm such diagnosis. So more to come on that. We will keep the community apprised on that. And one other item that I want to announce, we have a separate flyer that went out this this evening. Tomorrow afternoon at 12 o'clock, there will be a live Zoom session. It's going to Director of Public Health, Karen Keen, will have this session. She will talk about avian influenza and the things that we're doing. This will also be an opportunity for the community to ask questions to her directly. And this will be moderated by our communications coordinator, Casey Kennedy. So again, it's just another attempt to try to keep folks informed. And if folks do see a dead animal on their property, I would ask them to call our office at 508-322-3339, or they can call Animal Control at 508-888-1186. So again, we'll do anything we can, but we do believe that we're going to be with we're going to be dealing with this outbreak at least into the early parts of the spring months. So pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for the town manager? Seeing none. I just have one, Derek. Anything on the quake tremors?
So nothing real to report. So we certainly, when we heard about this, engaged our emergency emergency director and fire chief quickly. They did receive a few phone calls. There has been no damage reported in town as of yet. But yes, we certainly got phone calls. Folks were asking what was going on. And we did report, as the news reported, that there was some tremors. And certainly up in the York Main area, I think they had the the large amount of damage up in that area.
Okay. Thank you. Select board discussion, new business? More business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Canty.
Second.
By Mr. Golden. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for watching. Have a good week.